Good evening. It is Wednesday, February 9th, 2022. It is 7:00 PM. My name is Rebecca Bench and I am calling this meeting of the Hatfield School Committee to order. First on the agenda, we have public comment. For those in the audience, I will give you the opportunity for brief public comments. And if you are joining us on Google Meet, feel free to put your name in the chat box if you would like to make a comment. Do we have any comments from the audience?
My name is John Pease. I'm a representative of the American Legion's, son of the American Legion, the Women's Auxiliary, and the Riders Group. Last fall, when I attended the alumni field hockey game in dedication to the new field, it was very proud to be there and watch the teams play and the townspeople that were there. But I think one thing was missing is that of the flagpole. And I think it's time that we make a decision where to put it. Our group is willing to put the nuts and bolts of it together and have it placed with your permission. And so for, I brought this to attention of the principal last fall. I don't know if he's here or not, who I talked with back then, but he did favor the idea. But of course, we have to ask permission from the board here and take it from there. When the ground thaws out, we can go and make a general location where we want it. We have a party that's very supportive of the idea and can probably supply us with a flag and a pole, so.
Wow, that's wonderful.
It's up to you folks. Again, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Right. As a school committee, it is our practice not to directly respond to public comments, but we can follow up.
Okay.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Sad in this occasion to have that role.
I know, I know.
Can I leave you back?
I can reach out to you after the meeting.
Okay, thank you very much. Have a good day. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Do we have your contact information? Do you want to write it?
Do you want to write it down for us?
Just to make sure.
Catch.
I can't get out of here.
Here.
Sorry.
I'm sorry, John.
It's tethered to our chairs.
We're stuck.
John, could you pass it down?
Now it'll be the picture.
Thank you so much.
Maybe that can go on next month's agenda.
Absolutely, yeah. I've started.
That's amazing.
Okay, that's awesome.
Do you want to let them know that?
Sure. All right, thank you so much, John. I will email you or reach out after the meeting and we'll plan on placing it on our upcoming agenda.
And the ground will still be frozen.
Yeah, exactly. All right. Do we see any public comment requests from the chat?
I do not.
All right. Seeing no other public comments, we thank Mr. Pease for his comments and
Thank you.
we will move on in our agenda. Our student representative is unable to be here right now, so we will table that item and we will move to the superintendent report for Mr. Wood.
Thank you. Seems like, so today, we did get news from the commissioner and I believe after, and also the governor, that he will be lifting the statewide school mask mandate that's going till February 28th. This provides the opportunity for the local Board of Health and the school committee to discuss how to move forward. My recommendation is for policy to have a discussion maybe next week so that we could bring together some data and, you know, get together the questions that we might have and to talk, we have our internal COVID group and just, you know, take a look at how we best can off-ramp in a meaningful way and as appropriate as the school committee would like us to do. We're in the process of transitioning from pool testing and test and stay to pool testing and at-home testing. Right now, we're doing the sign-ups. Parents have an option to opt-in to pool testing and to opt-in to the stay-at-home kits, as do staff. And so we're starting with staff as part of the protocol. And so that will start this week with those kits to go home. And then next week, we'll start with the students and the families and those will go home. And we're just trying to figure out the best way to get them home in a safe way, if we're going to do a pickup or if we're going to, with certain age groups, have them just go home in book bags and things like that. There are two kits, two tests in each kit, so they're for two weeks. So every two weeks, we need to do the same setup. Several of the school committee joined me for capital committee meetings with the town and the finance committee meeting. Our next one will be with the finance committee on February 15th. I believe that's just the finance committee, it's not the select board.
That sounds correct to me.
And it says, it says.
I thought it was both.
You think?
We will clarify that.
We'll clarify.
That invitation was just for the finance subcommittee and you, or was it for the full committee to attend?
I took it to mean the whole committee.
The whole committee?
So I invited all of you, yes. And the invitation said 7:00 PM, but I think further information was that we don't need to be there until 7:20?
Yeah, we will clarify that information.
We'll clarify that. We did have a good meeting with the capital committee in that we discussed all the capital items that were on our list and there was openness to have them continue on the list. There is some question about our tech replacement cycle, which is on the list, and whether, how best to look at equipment that is sort of grouped together. And this is, it was a good conversation because it was about how the town is looking at it for all the departments. It's not just, they weren't in any way singling out technology. And so I think they're going to have that internal conversation and debate within their committee and bring that to the select board. But they, I think, tentatively agreed to keep it in the list and to have it, but a question of how to pay for it is still on the table and so that we need further information. If they don't pay for it, I need to come back to the school committee and as to our budget deliberations, we need to talk about that. One other item that was on the capital committee discussions is new this year, is we talked about safety upgrades for the main office, for us to look at how to maybe refurbish the front office for safety, for handicapped accessibility, and to make it overall just more professional working in terms of how the space is allocated and how workflow, students come in, parents can come in and so forth. You know, since I've been there, I know it's hard to believe, but it does get very busy and it's very compact. And for my few short days that I've been in the elementary school and how wide and open air that space is, it's very difficult at the academy. But my bigger concern is the safety. The administrative staff has no access to see who's coming into the building except through the video cameras and they're not always that clear. And so you really can't see who the people are. Luckily, our staff know the kids and parents so well, they recognize them, but if, you know, a stranger came, you just don't know. So I'll be meeting with an architect next week to take a look at that. And I just got that information, so I'll sit down with you and we'll map out a time for him to come in and kind of take a look at that. And it's an architect I've worked with before, so, you know, I certainly hope that we can get a good estimate, because what we need is an estimate for the design and then a second year would be the build or refurbish. So on personnel, just updating personnel, we had actually, it seems like in the last four days, we've just had this number of personnel changes. Just today, Gail Puleka, our BCVA, resigned to take a position closer to her home, so we wish her well. We certainly will miss her. She worked part-time for us, so we'll look at posting that or contracting out for that position. It's not uncommon to contract with BCBA's. So we'll be putting that into a strong effort shortly. We just had a cafeteria worker who fills in mostly, but does have a regular assignment. She had an injury at home on one of our ice storm days and so she's unable to come back to work, so we're looking for a replacement there. Our principal update is Melissa Petra has accepted. She was offered the position. We negotiated a contract within the norms of the existing contracts and her exact start date is up in the air. The superintendent was very gracious in saying, you know, he wanted to work with us and he was able to find, he thinks he's able to find an interim. He was trying to reach out and get that start date negotiated. He said absolutely no later than March 18th would be her start date here, but he needs to see if we can get an earlier start date for his interim and if so, then she can start earlier here. It's about the same timeframe that I've been filling in at Smith Academy with Chris and Connor, so it's just, it is what it is. But we're very happy Melissa is able to join us. And just a piece of information, Phil Genovese is on leave. I believe it's about four to six weeks. He's had an injury at home as well and we wish him a speedy recovery. And then lastly, in talking with John Halpin and trying to make sure that we can keep our staff in the food services, he recognized that the majority of his staff are below minimum wage, so we would like to bring them up to minimum wage. It'll be about, and this is the sad part, it'll be about $800 for the rest of the year. It's well within our enterprise budget. This is not part of our school budget at this point. They do an amazing job. We really do have great cafeteria workers and John has just motivated them and working with them very well. He's a hands-on manager as well, director. And so this increase would come from the enterprise fund.
Okay. Awesome.
And that's my report.
All right. What questions do committee members have for Superintendent Wood?
Is there going to be some background shared with the community about our new principal?
Yeah, we'll have a welcome evening and.
Can you give us a two-second, like, can you give us a little bit of information right now for anybody who's watching, where she's coming from, what her background is?
Sure. So she's currently the principal at Sheffield Elementary School, almost up the road, I would say, right, in the western part of the state. And she has her CAGs. She's been there for six years. She's actually been in the district much longer, not the totality of her career, but a good portion of the latter part of her career. She's probably got about 23 years of experience. She lives here in Hatfield, so she'll probably get a lot of our calls when we can't get into our buildings weather-wise. She doesn't know that part yet. That was the other jobs as a superintendent. And yeah, so she has two children and all went through the Hatfield Public Schools and they're very successful in their own right in their college programs and graduated college already, so.
Awesome.
Yeah.
We'll look forward to the update and the announcement. Thank you.
Go ahead.
One last question. Are we seeing much response to the request for people signing up for the test and stay at home kits?
I think it's about what we expected. I think we're at about 150 was the final number roughly, district-wide.
Okay.
So.
Comparable to the pool testing.
Comparable to the pool testing and to the prior test and stay piece.
Do you know where we are relative to, I know statewide participation averages were higher than our participation average. Do you know what that gap is by chance?
I haven't seen the new data around the new participation rates. I haven't seen that yet.
Okay.
They haven't published it.
So the old rates were?
They're still rolling it out, because districts had actually until today to get the numbers in. They were supposed to be registered by January 31st.
I would appreciate next time we sit down for an update on that, if we'd know where we are versus sort of a state average.
Okay.
That would be helpful.
All right.
Mr. Wood, did we want to mention the school committee secretary?
We could, absolutely. I did leave her often, I am sorry. Melissa Brown was interviewed by Ms. Bench and I and she's accepted to be the school committee secretary. I thought she was going to be out there in technology land watching and taking, no, she might be.
Might be on the YouTube.
She might be on the YouTube channel, but she also said she might watch just the recording. So she and I will work in transitioning over the note-taking for the next set of minutes that you'll have to look at.
Can we have like champagne for that?
And she's actually got experience.
And she's here.
There she is.
Hello, Melissa.
Oh, she has a different last name, that's why. And she has experience with town board meeting minutes and so forth, so she was a great candidate.
We had a great interview.
So we look forward to working with her, yeah.
Very good. Yes.
Give Melissa.
All right. Hearing no further questions for our superintendents, let's.
I don't have questions. I just have a statement, obviously, about the policy and the masks that we get that situated before.
Yep. Policy will work together to meet shortly in light of the recent news.
We'll have to vote on it eventually though, right?
We will all, so when, my plan is that when policy meets, which hopefully is early next week, we will review the current policy and see what direction we need to go as far as, you know, the school committee voting, based on what's currently written. Some of the areas on our policy sort of refer directly to DESI guidance.
So that you would just follow it.
Yeah, exactly. So we'll clarify that in our policy meeting.
Okay.
Yep, that's all. Thank you.
Isn't it true, though, that no matter what we decide, we can't do anything unless the Board of Health rescinds their town mask mandate?
Yes, so, yes, the Board of Health, my understanding is that the current Board of Health mandate goes until March 1st, which is one day later than the DESI guidance. So Liz Kugler is the representative from the Board of Health who has been working with us and she has been attending most of our policy meetings, so we will also invite her and hear about that.
And there's a Board of Health meeting tomorrow?
I think so. Yeah, they usually meet the day after us. All righty. Okay. All right, let's move to Dr. Driscoll.
Sure. Thank you. I have a really brief update tonight. So I'm happy to be here in my new capacity as the principal at Smith Academy. Excuse me. It's been an absolute pleasure to start my work there. The staff and students have been just unbelievably welcoming. I've had the pleasure of getting into classes, talking with students and staff, and even stepping in as a sub for a couple of classes today. It was great.
I hear you're a really great sub.
I enjoy it. I do, I really like it. I gotta say, I've been so impressed by just the caliber of young men and women that we have and that I've met up there. They're polite, they're respectful, they're engaging, it's just really, really nice. I was able to go to the basketball games earlier tonight, too, which were a lot of fun, to see the JV and the varsity boys and to celebrate our seniors, our senior boys for senior night up there. It was really great to see them, meet them, then meet the families that came as well. And I look forward to attending more of the athletic and community events that Smith Academy has. There's a lot to offer there and I'm really excited to be able to do that. Over the last three days, my goal has been to really to talk to people and to listen. Though I've been part of the Hatfield education community for a year and a half now, this is, I'm very new in this role and I'm still kind of in the stage where I don't know what I don't know and I'm trying to rectify that. Point in case, I may have accidentally tripped the silent alarm yesterday. Good to know that Hatfield PD has a wonderful response to it. And so just over the next weeks and months, I'm really looking forward to working with the staff, with the students, with the community members, to identify where things at Smith Academy are really strong and where they can improve and working with everyone to build those improvements together wherever they're needed.
Awesome.
And that's where I am right now.
Wonderful.
Yeah.
Well, we're very excited to see you here in your new role.
Thank you.
So I appreciate it so much. Any questions for Dr. Driscoll? All right. We look forward to the future. All right, let's move to our Director of Student Services, Ms. Bremner.
Hi. Sorry I was a minute late rushing in. So our CPAC held its first meeting on January 18th. They had seven parents attend, which is a significant increase in participation over the past couple of years. So our president, Sean, was very excited by that turnout, but we would like to invite more folks. The next meeting is March 8th and there'll be some promotion of that as well and I'll be joining that meeting. They invited me over. And we have been working on the budget, future and present, and as leadership, we met with the new principal for HES and I was able to ask some questions around multi-tiered systems of support, paraprofessional support, and experience with specialized programs. So I'm really looking forward to that new relationship that we have coming into HES in relation to my umbrella of things. On February 2nd, we had DESI provided a parent orientation evening on tiered focus monitoring. So this is something that is cyclical and it used to be kind of bigger and less often and now there's a little bit of something that happens every year, sort of, but this year is the year that they'll be onsite on March 22nd. So they provided, we had two parents come and they provided information around that process. Additionally, we're going through tiered focus monitoring for our English language learners and Denise Ebelito, who's our ELL coordinator, is doing a fantastic job preparing for that. John Robert is doing a fantastic job preparing our civil rights tiered focus monitoring, so it's a busy world in that area. I actually just met with two members of the CPAC this Monday and so I had given you guys the agenda, but now I've had the meeting. So I'll be going to that meeting in March. We're going to work on making sure we have really complete lists while making sure we have confidentiality and trying to support getting information out there. They're planning on creating a parent survey, so parents in the district, I think their plan is to go to all parents, so that may be coming up. The basic rights presentation, which is something that we are required to offer once a year, is we're partnering with Belcher Town. That'll be February 28th. And then we're really excited that Smith Academy and their CREW period is doing a film screening from a film from Landmark College that features students who are neurodiverse and identify as having disabilities and their experience going to college and in high school and things that help them. And there's workbook and different materials that come along with that from Landmark. So that's been a great thing that we'll get up and running at Smith during CREW. They're breaking it up. And some of us, myself and a CPAC parent, and we're hoping to get one transition-age student, will be attending different conferences through the MASPAC, which is what we're signed up with. It's all right around when tiered focus monitoring is, it's the week before. There's different evening conferences and then March 19th will be full-day conferences, but we're excited. I think I'll have a student from Smith joining us, which is exciting. And that's it.
Right. Thank you. What questions do committee members have for Ms. Bremner?
I have a question, but info in response to the CPAC. Two weeks ago was the meeting for the collaborative and I brought it up to the board at the collaborative about CPACs. I wanted feedback from other districts about their success or their ideas and it seems most of them are in the same boat that we are of low attendance and it waxes and wanes over the years. There was some discussion about how the collaborative can assist different districts, perhaps help facilitate some things regarding CPACs of potentially hosting some events for the towns to join in, like we're doing with Belcher Town for the basic rights presentation. So the collaborative is looking into ways that they can pull together and help all of us be more successful with our CPACs. I think they were also going to bring it up with, I don't know, I don't remember what the name is, for their collection of special ed directors. I know the superintendents are the steering committee and I don't remember if there was a name for the.
We have the Western Mass Fed Directors.
Through the collaborative, they're.
Through the collaborative.
Yeah. So they were going to kind of bring it up. I know, I can't.
I don't know what our name is, actually.
I don't know that there was a name.
It's something about Western Mass Special Ed Directors. I don't think it's association, though. It's something.
No, but like the collaborative calls the group of superintendents, the steering committee, and there was something that, one point that they called the Fed Directors, but I don't remember it. Anyway, they're going to kind of give out the information through that cohort as well to gain some interest and some collective input on making it successful for all of us, including Hatfield.
That's how I was able to hook into Belcher Town was through that group. And they also, and I had Sean put it on the Facebook page, I think, tonight, too, but they're, Hadley's offering a transition, like, night for parent information about transition-age students. And so we, Hadley invited us to that and that'll be on the CPAC page, too. So it is a good group, so, yeah. And there is Sherry from the collaborative on it, so.
Right. So that's kind of in the works to.
Nice.
To gain support and so poor Sean isn't trying to do everything herself and, you know.
Yep. Great, and thank you.
Awesome. Any other questions for Ms. Bremner? All right. We will move along in our informational reports. Thank you so much to our administration. And we will start with the budget subcommittee. I'm sorry, the policy subcommittee with Ms. Brown. Do we have a report?
Sure. We, the policy subcommittee met on January 28th. It's a little bit of old news now, but we reviewed the new guidance from DESI, unanimously decided to follow the DESI guidelines, as Superintendent Wood stated, to eliminate test and stay, eliminate contact tracing, go to give families the option of pool testing and once, give the option, the continued option of pool testing one day a week, which is optional for families, in addition to families being able to sign up for the home test kits. So an email's gone out, so families that are interested in signing up should reference that email and sign up accordingly. We discussed criteria for applying for a mask waiver, but again, that's at this point sort of old news with the new news that came out. And then we reviewed an equity rubric developed by Superintendent Wood and talked about using the rubric and finalizing the rubric in future meetings against policy that were currently up for review. So we'll be reviewing the rubric, going through new policy, and we also talked about bringing in some student representatives possibly to kind of talk about equity and diversity strengths and then areas of concern.
Yep, as relates to our current policies. Exactly. Yep, I was also there. And I guess the only thing I would just clarify is that our current policy is written that the DESI, that we will follow the DESI recommendations for responding to COVID scenarios is how our current policy is written. So we, you know, we discussed the DESI changes and the policy subcommittee, you know, unanimously said, our current policy says, we can just go ahead and make the changes and it didn't need to be brought to a full committee vote based on how. and it didn't need to be brought to a full committee vote based on how the policy is currently written. So those changes are being made. Do committee members have questions regarding the policy update?
No. Oh, no. I'll have to think about that. Sorry.
Okay. No, it's fine. And there is, on the agenda, it says like social justice and equity update, which is basically the rubric just that we are working on in our policy subcommittee.
You're going to work on all of that and then bring it forward to us?
Yes. Yeah. So it's just, we're basically, like, when we review a policy, it's like having a checklist. Like, does this take into account students of all backgrounds? Are we missing anything? So it's like a self-check for us. But that's just something that we're working on developing. All right. All right, hearing no other questions. We will hear from Ms. Daniszewski about budget.
So since our last meeting, we met with the finance committee and kind of just did a quick run-through of what we presented last meeting. It was very encouraging to hear their support for the schools, I think. And then we had another quick meeting today to kind of just to re-talk about our presentation and whatnot for next week. But yeah, so that's basically all that's happened. Nothing crazy.
Any questions for budget? Kristi, did you have anything to add for that?
No. I mean, I think there's going to be an opportunity that this whole committee needs to be up to speed in how to, like, assertively understand and be able to speak for our budget.
Yeah.
And we're making sure that you're going to be prepared to do that. So it's not just our superintendent who's stuck with every question. Because, to be honest, sometimes he's not going to be in every room that all of us are going to be in where questions come up. And so I think Danielle and I would both appreciate making sure that everyone knows the scope of things and to be able to defend the budget, because it's very defendable. But there are sometimes misconceptions about the school budget. And if we're educated, we can help put those to rest.
Yep, I agree. All right. I feel like this is a good segue to capital planning, which is part of budget.
Right. So this is the capital planning season. It's like capital planning meets a lot for a very short window of time. And I think Mr. Wood did a full synopsis of what's going on. I would, you know, continue to say, we're seeing support. I think it's a question of not whether we get money for technology, just where it comes from and where it gets budgeted. It's just a, it's a paperwork thing, not really a do kids get laptops question. And there was a lot of support, I will say, for the idea of getting some upgrades to that office space. And I guess the one thing I think is a committee that we will watch, and I know our superintendent will watch, because those kind of projects can have a lot of creep. People get excited about the opportunity to refresh things, which, especially if, you know, it's been that way for generations. So we're just going to make sure that as costs come in, that we are both making sure that we stick to, like, what is the, what are the highest needs and what does that cost? And then if there's an opportunity to take advantage of work being done, to get a few other things done, because we could do it cheaper when we're doing everything, that we look at that as well, but that we're clear in where the costs stop. So we're looking at some options, not just a big, you know. I don't think we want to talk about it being a makeover for the school. It's not. It's the office getting reconfigured so that it's handicap accessible and that it has a better workflow, and it's a more secure position that administration can see who's in the building. That's really its focus.
I think so. You don't like burnt orange?
And if, so Connor, if the color scheme, yes. Color scheme has to change in the process, so be it.
The Brussels style.
And possibly the nurse's station, you know, being more private.
Yeah. All right. Awesome, more to come. Do folks have any further questions about budget or capital planning? Okay. Great. In which case, we will move along to the business portion of our meeting. And we will start with meeting minutes.
Do you want them taken separately or all together?
I'm open to it.
Let's do them together. Do you do them together?
That's fine with me.
Okay. I'll make a motion to accept the meeting minutes for November 10th, December 8th, and January 12th.
This is Kristi Boudreau. I'll second that. For the sake of she's taking notes on the computer.
All right. What corrections do folks have? I did, I do just want to point out that the minutes for, that we have in our packet for December 8th say that the administrative reports are attached. They are not attached in the packet currently.
They're already online.
But they're already online.
Yeah.
So. They have been published.
They have been published.
Is there any discussion about the meeting minutes? Let everybody have time to get through them.
They looked good.
All right. Well, hearing no further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
All right. The motion passes unanimously. All right. We will now turn to Mr. Wood for a presentation of draft budget edits.
So at this point, there are no edits. I just want to make the committee aware, again, repeating what's already been talked about around technology. We certainly, it was back and forth in the budget preparation, but it, I finally did take it out because we put it on the capital plan. So it's currently resting in the capital plan. But if they come back and have a different perspective on either how, they may say it needs to be funded in the school budget, for example. And so that will be something we'll have to have a conversation about, how we make that change within our budget. And so that's something to, you know, make sure everybody's aware of. And I think at this point, that's really the only big change that we would need to make from anything.
Great. More to come on that? Yeah. All right. Budget transfers?
There are no budget transfers. We went back and, again, my practice is only to do a transfer when we're, and I want to get closer to this in reality, until the line is actually eliminated, is zeroed. So we're going to go another quarter, because the next ones that we would need to do, we're going to be in the grants, and we feel comfortable with where we are in the spending in the grants. So we're going to go another quarter before we need to make another, take another look at whether or not we need to do transfers.
All right.
It just makes for counting to be easier when we're not moving money around back and forth.
Totally makes sense. All right. Well, we will move along. So we did have on our agenda a discussion of the updated DESI guidelines for in-school testing, which were already referenced by Superintendent Wood and were discussed in policy. But we, and this is just specific to the in-school testing changes.
Correct.
Did you have anything additional to present?
I don't, no, I don't. I just, you know, if there were any questions from the committee, you know, so far, again, it's going well. It's been, I think, well-received. I have not received any kind of questions back from parents other than questions about, you know, a couple of questions about how to make sure they're not, they don't opt in. And we've made that clear. You just don't need to complete the paperwork. But other than that, I think it's pretty straightforward. And we will have more communication, again, about how we're going to get the kits home. That's coming out shortly.
Just for clarification, I think I have a good understanding of for those watching. So they're going to just do testing once a week now instead of two.
Correct. Pool testing.
Pool testing. And you can be in just pooled testing. You can be in both. You can be in just the home part. All of that. And then, so you do a pooled test. It comes back positive, negative. There's no contact tracing. Just that pool is retested, and if they're positive, they go home.
Correct.
Okay.
Just one clarif, so we're phasing out the test and stay and that piece about close contact. So until, probably with this pool test that we just did, you might get a close contact notification this week. But we'll be phasing that out. And after the break, you won't be getting that anymore.
And Michael, if families were already signed up for pool testing, they still fill out the email? You have to re-opt in to pool testing through the email, or no?
No, not for the pool testing. They just have to opt in for the test and stay kit.
The home kit.
The home kit. I'm sorry. Goodbye, myself. Thank you. Thank you for putting that.
And then what's happening with the lunchroom? Are we going to go back to normal a little bit on that?
I think that's a conversation that we need to have. You know, I need to get more input. I think there's, you know, today's news, I think, is startling to some. And so we want to take a look at it. But I think, you know, again, I use the phrase, it's probably jargon. You know, we need to off-ramp this, so we might need to take a couple of...
Do it in stages.
Yeah, do it in stages. Exactly. But as soon as we can, we'd like to, I think. We want our gyms back.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Non-biased opinion, of course. All right. Any other questions from committee members about that topic? Okay. All right. School choice openings.
Yes. In your packet, this is a formula that I devised a number of years ago. Worked pretty well for the years that we did it. So basically, what I did is I took a look at where we currently have students and moved them up a grade for the next year. And then what I do is I peg a, an estimated class size, and you see the target class size over there on the farther right column, fourth one in. And then I basically see how many kids that we need to fill it up to get to that target size. And then I subtract two kids, because I want to leave room for Hatfield move-ins. And then, so on the far right, you would see how many students we could accept for school choice in their respective grades. And the total number of new, of new school choice students would be 40, because in our numbers, we currently count the existing school choice kids. And you can see, we do have a couple of class grades that, you know, we could look at more than others. And there are some that are zeroed out.
That's, so that's, that 40 is 40 including current?
No.
Nope. 40 brand-new.
Because the existing are in the headcount.
The existing are in the headcount, correct.
Across the top.
Second girls is...
The second girls should be school choice?
School choice, yeah.
Yes.
Okay. I thought so. I just wanted to be sure.
Okay. So what column are we looking at of your recommended...
So if you go to the very far, if you go to the far, far right, the last column, those would be the counts in each grade that I would recommend at this stage.
So you're not recommending any for second grade?
No.
No.
Okay.
So is, how is this factoring in, whether there's one classroom of kids or two classrooms of kids?
So in the FY3 column, I did...
I didn't spend time on this particular one.
So it would change if we went, so right now, I project one classroom. But if we go to two, then we would add the school choice.
Okay. Currently, we're budgeted for how many?
Two. Two of every, at every grade.
Okay. So is there a reason why this and the budget don't?
I just wanted you to see what it would look like if we had to make adjustments.
This is also with one preschool?
Yes.
Right now, yes. But we don't, we don't take school choice in preschool. That's tuition-only. It's a different piece.
I just was...
Yep.
All the numbers.
I have a question about 12th grade. Over the years, it has come up many times about...
Accepting 12th grade.
Yeah. Adding in to the senior class. Current families sometimes can be nervous about how that affects standings or any of that. Was that considered in...
It wasn't. This is the first I'm hearing of it. And it's not currently part of our policy. But, you know, again, we could easily make those kinds of adjustments.
I don't remember if there was something in place at one time about the rankings, like, you know, for valedictorians, salutatorians, and all of that. If we had put something in place about that or not. I feel like there was a conversation many years ago.
Maybe, yeah.
And I don't remember if anything was really put in place or if that's not a good idea to do, because you want to welcome new students in. But at the same time, honor the kids that have been here working towards those goals. It's an interesting...
It is.
Dilemma. That I don't know how you want to handle it, but I'm just bringing it to your attention that this is something that has come up before.
Yeah. Well, I, earlier, I saw Sax, our guidance counselor. It's something, obviously, I'd want to talk to her and see what, if there's been some issue in the past. You know, obviously, we couldn't, we couldn't deny someone who became a school choice student. We couldn't deny them their prior, you know, accomplishments, and it would be calculated in. So, you know, if that's something that the school committee wanted to consider, we could certainly review our policy and adopt, you know, changes to our policy. I think there are a couple of things about our policy I would like us to take a look at after reviewing it again closer.
I also don't remember if there was something in the student handbook about any of that. I feel like maybe that's where some of it was.
It may be, but I don't...
So are we talking right now about, like, accepting the...
If you accept them, if it's a blanket acceptance or if there's any, I don't want to say limitations, but I don't, I don't know.
Yeah. I have heard this expressed in the past, and I will say I'm personally very uncomfortable with the idea that we would somehow exclude an accepted student from class rankings.
I don't know if it was around your time or not when...
Yes, it was.
Greenfield had a parochial school that closed. And we accepted a number of their students when they closed. And that caused a bit of upset for some current families at the time about their child who had worked so hard to get that ranking now was displaced by somebody just coming in. And so it's a very tricky subject. And I just wanted to be mindful of it. Whether, how it ever plays out.
I appreciate it. I did not know about it at all.
Just so you're aware of it.
Yeah. I mean, there are lots of conversations that we could have about class rank, weighted grades, things of that nature that have changed over time, that I don't think, you know, we're in a different place. I'm not recommending that we have those conversations. I'm just saying, you know, it's not... So thank you for the information. I'll go back and talk with Ms. Sax.
That's all it is. I'm not advocating for anything. I'm just alerting you to a previous discussion that was had about accepting a number into that grade.
Right. And we, that could be our plan. It's just that we won't accept 12th graders.
I wonder, historically, do we know if we have a lot of people...
I wonder, historically, do we know if we have a lot of people trying to trace in?
It's not often.
Yeah, I can't imagine. I mean-
Especially a senior year.
Yeah, I can't.
If they do, there's a reason.
It's not, yeah.
Right.
It's not frequent.
But I just didn't want to leave it unsaid.
No, I appreciate that. I appreciate that.
Are we voting on this tonight?
You don't have to vote on it tonight at all. And I can get that information about the 12th grade. And, you know, I can, I can do another format with all, all the current grades that we have.
I want to see us accept students into second grade and have two classrooms. That's what we budgeted for. And same with pre-K, I think. So at pre-K, you're not accepting any students.
Well, it's a different thing. I know it's a different thing, but essentially, we're not, we don't have room for another, any more kids. Is that what you're saying? In this format, if we don't have a second preschool, we have no room for any other kids?
Well, we would, we would have some room for new kids coming in, three-year-olds, certainly if we only had one classroom, I believe, for tuition-based.
So I think the thing that we have to be wary of, and I know you and I have talked about it, is, so there's certain ratios for preschool. So at any one given time, we have to be within that ratio.
Right.
But if we are three days a week, two days a week, half-days, you know, we can move that around quite a bit. So if we have more of that flexibility of going back to half-days, we can, we will have room. But it's a matter of going back to half-days. And I think you guys have really wanted full days.
If we stayed with full week, full days, there's no room.
It's going to be very tight.
So, okay.
So I guess I want to look at that. Danielle, can I jump?
Yes.
It's related, but so just having nothing to do with these other two conversations, not disparaging them, just unrelated. I'm looking at this and I'm, from a business perspective of thinking of our schools as a business, which sometimes we need to do.
Absolutely.
We are really weighted to having space open in the later grades when from just a business practicality, the earlier we could bring school choice students in, I think the better off the district would be in the standpoint that I think they will come and like it and stay. And that's a continuity for everyone, for our planning, for the kids in that class. And so for me, when I, if there is flexibility between having an extra opening at an early grade, whether that's preschool or kindergarten or first or second or third, versus having capacity to have a few more seniors or to have that grouping where they might be a little over the target. So if they're 25 instead of 22, I would rather see us shift for capacity in earlier years from the standpoint of just fiscal sustainability. And unfortunately, right now, that's not what we're, that's not what the page is looking at so much. I mean, I get where you, this is a great conversation starter, right?
Yeah, exactly.
And it, and it's worked for that because look at all the things we've said. But that's the part about where the formula nets us out. And I guess my other question is, is there a reason, from an educational standpoint, to track the boys and girls?
No, it's just the way the data came in.
The way the data came in. There actually was, a few years ago, we had one class that was- It was like all one gender? It was all one gender. And some people were getting upset about that and looking to remove the minority gender because they were so overwhelmingly in the minority. So we kind of kept track of that of how- But we don't keep track of it when we look at students coming in. They come in blind, so. You cannot. Yeah. But that was a consideration of do we take the risk by opening up school of choice and perhaps getting five more of that majority or not? So that was one of the reasons that we tracked that. And it was asked of the superintendent to show us. Okay. For just those purposes, to understand the balance of a grade. Okay. Are you, do you have more? Or I'm done? It's always been my understanding with preschool, and I know it's tuition, that we're not required to have it in our building. We're required to service the kids that have been identified as needing services. And a long time ago, we created an in-house preschool to meet those needs and to have the peer cohorts join them in the ratio that you've mentioned. I've always understood it that since that it's, that is its purpose, to service the needs of those kids. It hasn't been looked at as this is a moneymaker. We should, we should open up another room to bring in more kids to make more money. That it's purpose is to service the kids that need it. So I feel like that's kind of a- I don't, I guess I take a little bit of issue with open it up so that we make more money. I think it is income-based, but I think it's a give space for other kids and families who are looking for preschool as well. So before we opened up the second classroom a year ago, we had a lot of demand. And folks in the community, they were like, where do I go for preschool?
Very upset.
Because there was, there was no capacity at all. And so while there is some income that helps offset the cost, I don't think that preschool is so much about a moneymaker for the preschool piece. I look at it as it has the ability to help us bring in more students who become familiar with Hatfield, who may funnel into our school choice program. And that has, that for me, has some implication. Of a preschool child being accepted as a school of choice.
On the other note, if we have Hatfield kids who can't get into preschool because we didn't leave it open, they now go to Wheatley and now they stay in Wheatley.
Right. That's the exact thing. It's a twofold thing.
I have a very big problem with not having any spots whatsoever open for pre-K.
And I'm not sure shifting to half-days, three days a week, I think-
It's not going to keep.
For a lot of families, that's more of a burden than a help.
It's the childcare Olympics out there.
Yes, it is.
And I think it's, it's important that even though the model is full day, full week, that was what we set out to do.
Right.
We, we still have all sorts of models within that based on parent preference and things like that. So, or need. Sometimes it's, a full day, full week is too much for-
Yes. I like having the option. I would love to go back to having the option, but I think right now, we have like no options.
I'm just saying, if that's the only way we're allowing people to come in, that isn't a functional option. Giving people the option to have less, fabulous.
I just have a quick, just budget clarification I want to make. We have the preschool line item here, which is in the black. And that's, that's all of preschool this year.
Yeah.
With two classrooms? Is that, like, if I look here at our budget balance?
Tell me what page, please.
Just the first, like, I'm just looking at the revolving accounts.
Yeah.
On the first page.
But that's not going to count.
What does this preschool line item exactly include?
It's not going to appear like that.
So, so it hasn't been, expenses have not been charged to it as of yet. So I wouldn't look at that and say, oh, we're in the black.
I'm, that's why I'm just asking the clarification.
Correct. Yeah, we are not, we are not going to be in the black in preschool by the end of the year.
For this year.
Yeah.
And we knew we weren't going to be at the beginning of the year.
Yes, I'm just totally want to be clear about, yes, because we do have two classrooms.
We do have two classrooms and one of them wasn't budgeted.
I'm wondering what, like, I mean, I don't want to think about it only as-
We're so late to the game last year.
Right. So I don't want to think about it like only financially, but that is a piece of it.
Of course, sure.
For sure. Is that the, is that the primary reason why we're talking about one classroom or?
No, I was just-
Could it be sustainable, I guess is what I'm thinking.
I think it could be sustainable. I think, you know, one of the things we've, we've already begun conversations about is advertising for the school choice. We certainly would include our preschool in there with the plan that we would have two classrooms.
I just want to add-
Multiple options.
Two, in addition to what everyone has said. I know in the last handful of years, it's been a big, it's been a big concern of families and they get frantic for families that do live in town, that have that age, that they're very worried that there's not going to be spots. And then what they're going to do. So my, my preference too would be that everyone that has pre-K age students that live in town, that there's a, there's a spot for those kids.
And that's exactly what happened last year was we had 18, I don't know if I, but it was a very large number that we didn't have a spot for. And so then we opened it up, but we opened it too late. So, yeah. We need to open it up.
Would you, you said advertising when you did the advertising for school of choice. Are you suggesting advertising it as school of choice or filling spots for Hatfield residents first?
Well, preschool's different.
Yeah, preschool's different. I mean, preschool's tuition. And it is first come, first served. But I think you guys have actually done it with Hatfield first.
Yeah, I believe there, in the, in the policy that when it goes to lottery, it goes to lottery for Hatfield residents first. And then, then siblings of school choice students and then siblings from, and then students from out of, out of district.
That's what I thought.
And we'll be using the census to directly contact the family.
Do we have any idea of like how many kids are in that age for next year? We probably don't, but I just did-
From the census, we should, we may.
We have the census data.
Yeah. So do we have any idea of that number?
I would look at it as-
Not offhand.
Not offhand. I don't know if you have it.
Not offhand.
I, I know that Lydia was- What's that?
They're in the process of going through it.
Going through it right now.
Yeah, okay.
Does Patty do that herself?
No.
No.
Is it March or April that we need to make our vote on school of choice?
June, June 1st.
Yeah, technically, it's later, but I think-
No, 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 we need to open it early.
That, right.
We need to open early.
The requirement is later, but we're bringing this forward now because I think we should open early.
I feel like we've always voted in March or April. I thought it was March because-
We don't have to vote today.
Yeah. I just wanted to show you the, how I'm thinking about creating the seats. And I can, you know, this is the nice thing about a formula. You can plug in different numbers and come up with different numbers as the end. Yeah.
Right. I, I think it might be also, you know, when we discuss this again, I know we've talked about it in the past, but it might be a little bit helpful for me just to see where we are losing students. Sixth grade to seventh grade, eighth grade to ninth grade. Do the preschool students stay for kindergarten? You know, I think that would be helpful as we're talking about like the retention of our students and our sort of increased capacity for school choices with the academy. Like where is that fall off and where do we mostly get students in?
Yeah, that, that might be historical data that we can only look at current enrollment for the most part, but I'll dig into that a bit.
I think we have some historical data.
I think we have some historical. He may not, but we probably do.
Yeah. I know we've talked about it before. We did, we talked about it last year for sure. So it's got to be in our minutes somewhere. Yeah, I just think it's helpful to sort of talk about this in context. Yep. Right. Any for-
Do you know if they've tracked that before?
I believe we did. We looked at it last year.
You looked at it last year, okay.
There's data there.
This wasn't on the agenda. Were we discussing that? It's not in my packet and I thought I saw it in my online packet, so I'm now confused.
We're talking about the calendar. No. I thought we had put it specifically on the agenda, but was it, I'm not, like, now I'm not seeing it. I really honestly thought it was there.
And that's fine. It's, again, for your view.
This was just a discussion.
We need to discuss it.
Discuss it?
I think this is part of Mr. Wood's report. Provided us that we-
There were just a couple little tiny things that I think are like typos.
Could be.
So for August?
Oh, I'm sorry. Does anyone have anything else about school of choice?
I'm sorry, I jumped in.
I didn't know, I just want to make sure. Nothing, okay. Yeah, okay. Go forward with the-
There it is.
The potential calendar.
So for August, on the side of the month, you have the PD days listed. But I think you mean to have them as 29, 30, and 31?
Yep, yes.
Yes.
Instead of 30, 31, and 1? Because 1 would be the first day.
Right.
And in April, the, the spring break did not get listed on the side, but I'm assuming that it is-
Looks like it's 17th to the 21st.
Right.
What's ER?
Early release.
Okay.
Thank you for asking that.
Sorry.
I kind of guessed, but I was like, I'm- The 14th of April, is that one of the half-day curriculum days? Or is that because it is Good Friday?
No, it'd be a curriculum day.
Because I thought we did not have those in a month where there was a vacation.
I didn't know that.
That was in the contract before, that in months where there is a vacation, we do not have a half-day.
I can look at that.
Because you can tell me another day. I don't need to know right now. So it would probably- So for people playing this game at home without all the paperwork?
No.
So this is just a, this is a starting draft for description.
Very forgiving draft.
And because some folks are right now, though, having to sign up for summer camp. And these days are crazy important. And so I'm going to say out loud that it, the draft has the first day of school on the 1st of September for first through 12th grade. And that kindergarten would start on the 2nd.
And preschool would start the 7th.
And preschool on the 7th. And that vacation weeks look like winter, let's see.
The normal weeks.
The normal weeks, right. February 20th through the 24th, April 17th through the 21st. Juneteenth, Juneteenth is not listed on this calendar because it falls.
Right, you're right.
With snow days.
It would be within the five snow day marks. So, yeah.
Right.
It would need to be listed.
Yeah, same with Labor Days and it's just not listed. I, I also think we need to consider that the school committee, I believe we did vote to include some of the Jewish holidays? They're not on here. I don't think that's part of it.
So, I mean, I think that's the conversation that we need to have. Because, I mean, it's been my practice to recommend a calendar that only honors the federal holidays so that we, so the conversation can be about what data we all have to reflect. But that's the conversation you have to have. I mean, it just means in terms of the length of the year, and not the length, but the, the scope of the year gets pushed farther and farther out.
Right. Yeah, and we don't celebrate any- We're discussing a draft. Christian holidays either. So I'm content with doing this.
Danielle, no, we do have Good Friday.
It's a federal holiday.
Christmas is a federal holiday, but it's still Christmas.
I know.
I understand, but it's still a federal holiday. Yeah, it's different. Yeah. And it's, it's winter break.
I think this was a good first look at it.
Yeah, it's just, this is for discussion. There's nothing that we're voting on.
And for the sake of people being able to make some decisions about camp.
On those first days.
Does any, I mean, is anyone having heart palpitations over the 1st of September? No.
I think that's in line with what we've done in the past and it-
It's usually beginning of, isn't it?
It is before Labor Day.
It's before Labor Day.
Yeah, it's before Labor Day.
It's usually just whatever's right before a Labor Day holiday.
We have a two-day school week and then a four-day school week.
Typically, that we've done.
And you kind of get to ease into it.
Exactly, that's it.
Just out of curiosity, why are we in the, how do kindergarten starting on a different day?
We started doing that, because they do orientation the first day.
Yeah.
They just kind of ease them in, rather than in the crush of kids that...
That's why pre-K starts later, because they do this.
They do the screening.
And then kindergarten, yeah, they have an orientation on that day.
So they actually come with their parent for a little window.
A chunk of time.
So they're not getting off the bus with all these other kids and going, wah!
Yep, they preview the classroom, they preview the space.
That's nice.
I experienced that as a child.
Is it in our purview? Is it in our purview to have, and this is like completely unrelated, but, to have like a day where the kindergarteners get to see the bus, like, before school starts? Because currently, we don't do that.
Yeah, let me talk with the kindergarteners, again, that's something that...
I know, it's not, probably not, it's just a thought that I've had, scared children.
Shouldn't that be done on orientation day? They used to do bus safety day.
Yeah, and we don't do that, so I just was curious.
Yeah, I'll talk with them, I mean, I think that makes sense, I mean, in other districts, I've done that, you know, the...
Maybe we could just include it with the orientation day, that a bus is there, and they get to...
Exactly.
They get to go on it.
Yeah.
Go for a ride around the parking lot, I don't know.
Exactly, yeah, yeah.
Practice getting on and off.
Right.
Yeah.
For that matter, it could be anybody who wants to ride the school bus day, because I got to tell you, I have a kid...
You want to get on a school bus?
My kid wants to ride the school bus, because he's never gonna get to, and he's like...
Never, right, because he's too close.
Oh, trust me, I know that.
For the kids that are too close, they would like to ride.
The first day, I'm telling you.
Okay, so I think this is a good preliminary discussion. I think we should plan on discussing holidays further in the future, and, you know, clean up some of the edits, but as far as the beginning of the school year, I think we're all just generally agreeable, and I know you'll have further conversations about this draft budget as well. Budget, oh my gosh.
Calendar.
Time is money.
Yes. As long as we're talking dates, though, on that calendar...
Oh, certainly.
Labor Day.
I'm wanting to confirm for next time we bring it up, graduation, would it be Friday, June 2nd? Or...
For the 9th?
So I gotta...
Usually the 1st.
It's typically the first Friday of the month, but sometimes, it has happened that it is the last Friday of May, because of the number of days.
Right, seniors have to get in 168 days, technically including snow days. So...
But because I think we're starting on the 1st, rather than, say, August 27th...
Right, we might make it.
I think it'll likely be June 2nd, but if we can confirm that, because that's something else that parents like to know and plan on him.
Yeah, for sure.
Of course.
Do we do, typically do graduation outside, or is it inside?
Been inside.
I think it's been inside.
Outside would be cool, but again, that's not our thing.
It would be, I agree.
Except when it is a thunderstorm.
Putting it out there.
Yeah.
Been there, done that in my lifetime.
Roll the dice on that.
We, I went to a Smith Academy graduation, that was when you drive in the parking lot, it was kind of up on the hill where that sign is for, I think it's for softball or something. It was up there, and there was a thunderstorm.
Yeah, I mean, there's always backup plans.
A long time ago.
Outside would be so cool.
All right. Okay.
Good, it's good feedback, thank you.
We're full of feedback tonight, yes we are.
If you give us one formula, we'll just hit rollin'.
Good dog. All right, the last item on this section of the agenda that we have is an appointment to the Master Planning Committee. The Select Board did request that the school committee put forward a name for master planning as an appointment, so, you know, I'm certainly...
Does that entail, please?
The Master Planning Committee is, they're revising the master plan for the town of Hatfield, and so, meetings with a board of people from many different boards in town, just looking at it.
Open space, rezoning.
Yeah.
House building, finance. For young people to have families.
Any committee that there is in town, pretty much has a person going.
There's gonna be an appointee to master planning.
And some open seats.
Yes, there are also some at-large seats that people can submit applications to, so, you know, if there is no objection, as the, you know, chair and the spokesperson for the committee, I would be, you know, interested in filling that appointment. I don't know if I hear any objection to that.
I'm not gonna fight you for it.
Anyone wants to go to more meetings?
Arm wrestle.
No way.
There they go, all right, so, hearing no objection, I will then be appointed to the Master Planning Committee.
Congratulations.
As the school committee representative.
Have fun with that.
I bring the fun, so, all right. Okay, so we do have an executive session that I would like to hold briefly, and we will plan on returning to open session to discuss and likely vote on the superintendent contract. So I will move that pursuant to Mass. General Law, Chapter 38, Section 21A, we move into executive session to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel, or to conduct collective bargaining sessions or contract negotiations with non-union personnel, or to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation if an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigating position of the public body and the chair so declares, which I declare. Do we have seconds?
I'll second, but I have a question.
Sure.
I understand that we're doing this regarding the superintendent contract, would we have another executive session at the end of our meeting for contract, teacher contract update, or is that going to happen during this time?
We can do an additional executive session and split it up, just in the interest of everybody's time.
Exactly, it was my thought, of interest of time, of not...
I'm more than happy to do that, it's just bundled together.
Quickly.
Yeah, that's great. So, we will, perfect, a roll call vote.
Aye, Maloney, aye. Stanishevsky, aye.
Bench, aye.
Butrow, aye.
Engelhardt, aye.
Okay. Motion passes. We will just, all right, it's 8:24, and we have returned to open session. So next on our agenda, we have the superintendent contract with a discussion and vote. So the school committee has a proposed contract for Superintendent Wood, and let's discuss, if anything.
It is a two-year contract extending from his term as interim, out for two years, so it starts July 1, 2022, going until June 30, 2024.
Yep, exactly.
Just confirming that for the public.
Yep, yep, exactly. And, you know, as we discussed previously, we're very excited to be working with Mr. Wood.
Very much so.
Very excited as well.
Going forward, I've had some great conversations with him about this contract.
I'm looking forward to the word interim coming off of his email signature.
I know, I know.
Do you want to do that now? You want to officially, gonna put that as part of your vote?
That you are no longer the interim, and that this is an extension of the contract. I would love to do that, and I would be happy to make that motion if you're ready for it.
It all means make a motion.
I move that we move forward with the contract proposed with Superintendent Wood, and in doing so, install him as our permanent superintendent, no longer the interim. Seconded.
All right, any further discussion from committee members? I shall offer only my thanks.
Congratulations.
I am very honored.
Call in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. All right.
Thank you.
Congratulations, thank you so much.
Thank you, I am so honored, really.
Right. Do committee members have any other items that require our action, or things that you would like to see for future?
No, do we have to make an additional meeting this month, or will that be discussed after we follow through our policy?
Yep, talking of policies, seeing the outcome of the Board of Health meeting, and I will let committee members know, and we'll let the public know about any additional meetings.
I just wanted to inform the committee that there is a leadership meeting for board members of MASC that I am attending on Saturday, March 5 in Marlboro. And Division 5 is having their officers meeting two days before that, so, Division 5 is moving forward, and I will be bringing information to you on our division and plans and events that we will be holding.
That's great, thank you so much. We really appreciate everything you do for MASC. All right. Okay, hearing no other, you know, knowing no other items that require our attention, I will move to, again, move back into executive session.
It should be brief.
And, yep, and not return to open session after.
I will second.
Should I read the thing?
Probably.
I'll read it. Pursuant to Mass. General Law, Chapter 38, Section 21A, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation if an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigating position of the public body and the chair so declares, which I declare. A roll call vote?
Maloney, aye.